Good evening and welcome to Monday, December 19th Board of Education meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Mrs. Lavelle, can we please have a roll call?
Yes.
Mrs. Costelli?
Here.
Mr. Doring?
Here.
Mrs. Passeretti?
Here.
Mrs. Raciolo?
Here.
Mrs. Reed?
Here.
Ms. Regan?
Oh, here.
Mrs. Roscoe?
Here.
Sorry. Mr. Ross?
Here.
Mr. Votto?
Here.
Nine members present and voting. Thank you very much. On to our student board representatives. First from Lyman Hall is Paige here. Welcome Paige.
Good evening. I'm just here to give an update on activities and events happening at Lyman Hall this past month. For Student Council, our tradition every year is to participate in Adopt a Family, where we purchase toys for our family in need, but this year we were not able to do so. So instead, we donated $600 worth of toys. A committee of our Student Council members went shopping for toys and donated them to the Toys for Tots Drive that was collecting donations at Lyman Hall. Student Council also donated $500 to the Holiday Forgiving Food Drive as a donation. Just an update from school counseling, I apologize. The PSAT scores were released on December 6th for all students who took the test. Counselors assisted students in grades nine through 11 with accessing their scores for the Fall Administration. Notification letters were mailed to seniors who are eligible for automatic admission into participating in a Connecticut college or university through the Connecticut Automatic Admissions Program. This is the first year the program is in place. From the College and Career Center, On-Site Decision Day was held on December 2nd, where seniors registered to interview with admission reps from Southern, Central, University of New Haven, and Quinnipiac University. Students who participated received their decisions for the college they applied for on the spot. From Lyman Hall Athletics, on December 17th, the boys' basketball team improved their record from two wins, no losses, with their 44-31 victory over Sheen. Cam Pragona with 12 points and Chase Sealy with 10 points led the Trojans to their victory. And next up is a home game for basketball against foreign on Tuesday. On behalf of Lyman Hall, I would like to congratulate two senior captains, Ethan Sias and Cam Pragona on the LH Football Team. They were named to the CHSCA Class MM/M All-State Offense, and they both have had a great season. From NHS, the National Honor Society has held the Holiday Forgiving Food Drive at Lyman Hall, where students brought in non-perishable food items needed by the donation organization. We collected a total of 746 items, most of which were on the wish list. And students were also able to earn spirit points for their grade by bringing in items on the wish list. Just some general updates. The Culinary Arts Program and Ag Science Program at Lyman Hall were at the hubcap selling their treats and plants to spread holiday cheer. During advisory on Wednesday, December 14th, students from each grade level were recognized by Lyman Hall staff at an assembly for their hard work and dedication in multiple realms of being students at Lyman Hall, whether it be academics, athletics, extracurricular activities, or just spreading kindness throughout our school. Students had an early release day on December 15th for Teacher Professional Development Day. And on this Friday, students will also have an early release day before the holiday break. Thank you so much.
Thank you for that update. And Leah, do you want to come up and give us an update for Sheen?
Hi, my name is Jackie, and here's just the update for Sheen. So On-Site Decision Day for seniors to learn about their acceptance from admissions representatives from Southern University of New Haven, Central, and Quinnipiac was held on December 1st. On December 8th, Sheen hosted a curriculum night for families of incoming freshmen to learn about the courses that they're required to take and any electives that they can take through interactive booths. The Sheen Student Council just ended their Toys for Tots Drive on December 14th, where students donated unwrapped toys to infants to 16-year-olds. The Environmental Action Club just hosted their Bottle Drive last Thursday, where cans and bottles were collected as a competition. And the Period 2A class that brought in the most cans won Neil's Donuts. And the money collected from those cans is going to build some sort of flower garden as a memorial. On December 14th, there's also a winter holiday concert for the chorus and the band. From December 14th to the 19th, SAD Club, Students Against Destructive Decisions, is hosting a door decorating contest for each advisory class, where students can decorate their class door with the theme this year of 12 Days of Safety. And then after a very successful first blood drive held by Ms. Colwick and selected students, the Blood Drive Committee is hosting a second blood drive this week on December 21st. On December 22nd, there's going to be a special bell schedule so students can watch the variety show, and we can see all the hard work that the theater students have been putting in so far this year. CNA applications are also going to be sent out soon after we come back from holiday vacation on January 3rd, where students can apply to the Certified Nursing Assistant Program, and they can have hands-on experience within the medical field. And then lastly, winter sports have just started, which includes scrimmages for hockey, and then boys' and girls' basketball, and then just some highlights. The hockey team has had one scrimmage in one game so far, resulting in a win this Saturday with a score of 4-2. The boys' and girls' basketball played against Lyman Hall this Saturday as well, the 17th, and the girls had a great win of 48-27. And lastly, boys' and girls' indoor track just had an invitational hell house this Friday and Saturday, which kicked off their season. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. There's never a lack of activity going on at the high schools, even as we approach the holiday time. So we appreciate you being here on this week, where I'm sure there's a bunch of things that you need to get done before the break. So thank you for coming. Moving on for presentation and awards. Mrs. Blissey, I don't believe we have any this evening. Then we have public comment. I will read a statement and then ask for public comment. "The Board welcomes public comment as it represents an opportunity for members of the public to express their views to the Board on matters within the Board's authority. We ask that all speakers maintain appropriate standards of decorum. No boisterous or inappropriate conduct is permitted. We expect comments to be respectful and in civil tone, and we will not permit name-calling, raised voices, or vulgarity. All comments must be directed to the Board and not to any individual Board member or individual member of administration. Although the Board values and appreciates input of the public, the Board and the Administration will not be responding to questions or engaging with dialogue during the public comment period. Instead, the Board and Administration will determine whether, when, and how to address the questions that arise during the public comment period, and whether to address the issues on the agenda of a future meeting." Having read that, is there any public comment this evening? Sure. Please just come up and state your name and address for the record. Welcome.
I'm Mike McCann, 68 Trump Drive in Wallingford. I wanted to, I guess, my first time coming in for it, so I just want to make sure I did it correctly. By the way, thanks. By the way, I know you guys love working here on the Board. It's a lot of work you guys do, just looking at the agenda of all the items that you're going through. I want to make my comments based on the transgender and the conforming youth, excuse me, the non-conforming youth that you guys are going to be voting on tonight, I think. I was going through it, and I wish I'd gone to it earlier, because I could provide comments for the 11th hour. So going through it, I wanted to just say that, like in the first part, and the second paragraph saying to ensure the safety, comfort, and healthy development of the transgender or gender non-conforming student, which is great. I was just wondering how that works into ensuring the comfort and healthy development for other students as well that are in the school. Just based on what I've been hearing in the news of, and of course, news always celebrates the worst of anything. I just wanted to make sure, I don't, and it's hard to ask a question that you can't answer, of course, at this time. Going into definitions of the gender identity, and it's saying that they have their deeply held sense or psychological knowledge of their own gender. And I'm thinking, because this actually goes from kindergarten through senior and high school, especially when you're talking at the grade school level, how would a child know that, a deeply held belief, at a grade, kindergarten, or first or second grade? I just can see it could be a big challenge of understanding that and where or how it would be understood. Going on to the privacy section of it. Don't worry, I didn't go take notes on every single little one or anything. So, in the privacy, it says, "This includes the right to keep private one's transgender status or gender non-conforming presentation." Oh, wait, I'm sorry, not that section. Same paragraph, though. "The school personnel should not disclose information that may reveal a student's transgender status or gender non-conforming presentation to others, including parents." And I'm wondering, how does that work into the responsibilities of a guardian, which you also have defined as stating is, "One has the authority and obligation of guardianship of the person of a minor, includes the obligation of care and control, and the authority to make major decisions affecting the minor's welfare, including but not limited to consent determinations regarding marriage and enlistment in armed forces, major medical psychiatric or surgical treatment." And I believe that the two of them seem to be in conflict. If the parent is not aware of what's going on with the child and in school, how can the guardian adequately assist the student in that, at that point? And let's see, when contacting the parent, continuing in the privacy area. When contacting the parent or guardian of a transgender or gender non-conforming student, school personnel should use the student's legal name and the pronoun corresponding to the student's gender assigned at birth when they're talking to the parent or guardian. But in other areas in this, the school's to use the gender that the student says they are, and their pronoun, and their name, even if it's different than what they're going to be talking with at the parent. So if the school's contacting me about my son, Alex, but then I read in the newspaper that it's Jane McCann did something, there's a big dichotomy, and if that's the first time that I hear about it, it would create a challenge to understand not knowing what's going on with my child unless I hear about it in the newspaper or something. I think it would be a big issue that would come up, a big challenge that would come up. In the gender segregated activities, it's saying, yeah, in situations where students are segregated by gender, such as for selected health education classes, students should be included in the group that corresponds to their gender identity, which I think could be a challenge, because if the student is having a... trying to figure out what gender they are, how would you put them in one or the other class? If they don't know, would you put them in both classes? Or, that's a challenge I don't understand. Is it something you ask the student? You say, "Do you want to go to the..." Is it girls, or females, or the male one? And the student tells you at that point which one they want to go to? I don't understand that, how it works. And I'm probably asking a lot of these questions out of ignorance, versus you guys have probably gone through in a lot more detail than I have. When talking about the locker room accessibility, which you probably hear a lot about from different people, it's just saying, it's saying, "Any alternative arrangements should be provided in a way that protects a student's ability to keep his or her gender status confidential." I could see that that could be a big challenge based on the student that's birthed male going into the girls' locker room to change. I would think, how could you keep anything confidential at that point? It doesn't make sense to me. I just don't understand that. And just about the physical ed class, intermural sports, and that they want to go whatever they identify with. I'm just wondering, does that include contact sports? That could be, I don't know if wrestling is intermural or intramural sport. I don't know which way, and that may never come up, but that's just things I keep thinking about. And going towards the end about the professional development, and it's saying, "Developmentally age-appropriate training shall also be provided for students." I didn't know if this was going to be available outside for parents to review prior to, or is parents not going to be able to see this before or not? And since I know you can't answer this, because it's just my comment section, I guess that's it for my comments on this. So thank you very much for your time and everything.
Thank you very much for coming, and thank you for your interest and your in-depth questions and comments on the policy. I wish we had more involvement like yours, so thank you very much. Any other additional public comment? Mr. Corso?
Good evening, everyone. Joe Corso, 3 Juniper Street, and the principal at Lyman Hall. So I know at your last meeting, you were discussing the hat and hood policy across the district, and I really wanted to just speak on behalf of Lyman Hall and Sheen, the two high schools. So we currently are not having any issues with the policy the way it's written. For Lyman Hall, this is new for us. It is a shift, where we had the no hat or hood policy before this, and it's actually diminished the amount of conflict that we're having with students. It's dropped our discipline cases significantly. This is one of our best starts of a school year, obviously with COVID happening in recent years, that we've had in quite a long time. So I came here to ask that at least for the high school level, we leave things the way they are. We're not having that impact. Obviously, the biggest problem we all face in high school is technology, the cell phones, which we're sort of winning that battle this year, and vaping, which is, you know, something we're constantly trying to get kids to understand is not good for them. So again, you know, on behalf of myself and Lyman Hall, and Mr. Zacco and Sheen, we'd really like the policy to remain the way it is, because it's not impacting our students who are teaching, and we're having a good start to the school year. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Todd Snyder. You will find me at 106 Pond Hill. I am the proud principal of Dag Hammershald Middle School. It's an honor to be here. A little bit of a difference between the high school and us, and I just want to provide my perspective. I'm speaking on behalf of our assistant principal, Mrs. Malita, the staff and faculty of Dag Hammershald, and also on behalf of the administration at Moran as well. I understand in recent days and weeks, you've probably gotten some emails from staff, and I just kind of wanted to provide some perspective. I think more than anything else, what we're experiencing at Dag and at Moran is an issue with the hats and the hoods. I ask, if you are going to revise this policy, that it not just be the hoods and not the hats. The two are really in combination with one another. In fact, I'd prefer it to stand alone if you are thinking of just having the hoods in place and keeping the hats. They're both the same, and here's why. We have two issues going on here. There is a safety issue and a disruption of the learning environment. And I'll start there first. When it comes to the disruption of learning environment, our students, because they're 11, 12, 13, 14 years old in some cases, our students have a lot of energy on a day-to-day basis. And what they're doing is they are either pulling the hoods down on one another, when students might not like that too much, they're also flipping each other's hats off. In talking with Mr. Piusantini, I believe that actually caused a physical confrontation back in the first week of school between students. It certainly has caused a bit of a problem for our students as well, because students don't want to have their hats taken from them or flipped off. And that's an issue, and that's disrupting the learning environment. I just saw it three times today. It's not an issue of classroom management. This policy, I don't recall this happening prior to the policy being changed in March of this year, so it's really kind of taking hold and becoming more and more as the months progressed. We didn't see it so much in the spring, because it was fairly new, and not so many students were wearing hats and hoods. So it's really causing a disruption in our day-to-day. This is our kind of, our climate, day-to-day, if you will, our culture. When it comes to safety, as we come out of COVID, we're really addressing not just the academic gaps in our students' performance, but also the social and emotional piece as well. And what's happening on a daily basis, especially with the hoods, is that students are not wearing them the way that the policy is written. Their ears are not exposed. I don't have the time or the will to go around and check every single student. I would do nothing more in my day than checking hoods to make sure that behind the ears. This policy stands in stark contrast with the electronic device, because if students are wearing their hoods, they can hide their earbud in their ear, which of course is connected to their cellphone, and that's on. That's a problem as well. But in terms of safety, we have students who are really closing themselves off. There was one student in particular, and yes, we do address these things on an individual basis. This student cinched his hood up so much that you could just see his nose and eyes. And yes, we do ask them to fix it when we do see it. So based on those two issues, I'm pleading with this Board to change the policy. More than anything else, I believe our job is to make sure that our students are in a safe environment and that there is not a disruption to the learning environment. So if nothing that I've said in the last few minutes has been convincing, I'll probably just state this. You know, the lessons within the lessons, I believe that our students, you know, we teach respect, politeness. This is what it takes to live in a polite society. There's a big aspect of our society that does acknowledge taking off one's hat when entering a building, or a room for that matter. This goes back hundreds of years, if you really look at the custom itself. It goes back to the Middle Ages. And I kind of see this and a whole bunch of other things as kind of a slow deterioration of really what it means to live in a polite society, if you will. So if your mind hasn't been changed, and I hope it has been, based on just the safety and the disruption to the school environment, I would just ask that maybe, if you look at all aspects of your life, that if maybe your accountant was wearing a hat or a hood when doing your taxes, or perhaps the medical person as you walk into the doctor's office, if there, the receptionist is wearing a hat or a hood. If any of those things in your personal, professional life give you pause, then why would we accept that and not create a policy that we want for our kids? So, I'm happy to, I know that questions aren't coming. You know where to find me. You've known me a long time now. I'm the most senior administrator in this district. I have never done this before. Stand up at public comment and talk. I've given many other presentations, and you've known me a long time. So please, if you decide to reach out before holiday and have questions, please do so. You know how to get ahold of me. I appreciate your time. And I extend to you and each of your families my best wishes for a happy holiday. Thank you.
Joe spoke on behalf of Manzo Zacco at Sheen. You know, if you're, my thoughts, obviously you're hearing some good things from both levels. I think it's okay that both policies could potentially be different, if that's what you considered, even within the high school.
Mr. Zacco, can you move a little closer? I'm getting a light that they can't hear you.
Closer?
Yes. They got.
Even within the high school level, we differentiate between underclassmen and upperclassmen with certain policies. Late arrival privileges, early dismissal. So I think it's okay for the Board to consider the middle school policy and a high school policy that may be a little different, based on the age, developmental age of students. And again, within the high school itself, we have different policies for students. So I know you have a lot to think about, and certainly, you know, we'll respect any decision you make. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming tonight. As you know, it's on our agenda later on after executive session. It is right now on the consent agenda. It will be pulled and discussed off of the consent agenda when we get to that. Seeing no other public comment right now, I'll close public comment, and I will entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of acceptance of retirements and resignations. I have a first, can I have a second?
Second.
First and second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are now in executive session. Thank you. Welcome back from executive session. We are now on to our consent agenda. I will make a motion to approve items 7.1 through 7.11, 7.13 through 7.22. May I have a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstention motion carries. Item number 7.12, removed from consent agenda, is the approval of the international trip to Italy. Any discussion? Hearing none, can we have a roll call, Mrs. Lavelle? Thank you. Mrs. Costelli?
Yes.
Mr. Doring?
Yes.
Mrs. Passeretti?
Yes.
Mrs. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Regan?
Yes.
Mrs. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Votto?
Yes.
Mrs. Raciolo? And I'm a no. Motion carries. Thank you. The next item removed from the consent agenda is 7.23, the approval of proposed adoption and revision of Policy 5145.43, transgender and non-conforming youth. Any discussion? Mr. Votto?
I would just like to reiterate some of the things I discussed at the Instructional Committee meeting this month. I am not voting to accept this policy as it's presently written. I believe the policy, the planned policy, follows the law as to not deny a transgender student the right to use, for instance, a bathroom or a locker room in which they gender identify. However, the law, to me, I've tried to do enough due diligence in looking this up, doesn't seem to address the non-transgender students, our service to them, to validate them. The law doesn't seem to include that. And if that's the case, and we are going to write this policy, I think in some way, the town of Wallingford, through the Board of Education, needs to somehow fix that. So I suggest bringing this policy back to the Policy Committee once again, to think of a way that includes all students. I feel we represent and do, and meet the needs of every student in our school system, not just a segment of students, or students with certain issues. We need to address the issues for all students. There should be equability, if I should use the word, equitability, for everyone. And I think the policy as written now, and correct me if I'm wrong, does not do that. It follows the law, but I think the law is, needs to be fixed as well, because it does not address the needs of all children. So that's the reason why I will vote no when we come to vote on this. And Mrs. Raciolo, I'm asking for a roll call vote as well, if we are going to vote on it.
Mrs. Regan, followed by Mrs. Costelli.
Thank you. Actually, in anticipation of this being removed, I did prepare a few remarks. I'm the parent of a transgender child. So this policy means a lot. Excuse me, I really need to get a motion about this. But this policy means a lot. Transgender students and the members of this entire community, the LGBTQ+ community, are underrepresented. They fight this fight every day, and their parents are with them. I have seen it firsthand. I would strongly recommend that anyone who does not understand what it's like to be the parent of a transgender child, or a transgender person, go out to GLSEN. They are an organization that is... They, their mission is to ensure that every member in the school community is valued and respected, regardless of their sexual orientation, their gender identity, or their gender expression. I am holding in my hand a... I am holding in my hand a 150-page document. It is the 2021 school climate that GLSEN performed. The overwhelming results of this climate is that transgender and LGBTQ plus students do not feel valued, they do not feel safe. Over 70% of them do not report incidents, because they do not feel that they will be addressed. I feel that this policy, though it is not required by state law, allows Wallingford to put our stake in the ground and make a statement. We see these students, we value these students. They are underrepresented, and I do not disagree that every student deserves to be seen and valued, that these students have a much more difficult battle at times. And I would be extremely proud if Wallingford would make that statement and say, "We see you, we understand you, and we will help you be a valued student and a valued person in your community and in the community at home." Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Reagan. Mrs. Costelli, followed by Mr. Doring.
Thank you. First, I'd like to recommend a book. I don't remember the author's name, but it's called This Is How It Always Is, and you might be familiar with that book. I didn't realize your situation. It's about actually a grammar, it's based on a true story. It's fictional, but it is based on a true story about a elementary-aged student. I think in K through 2, I don't remember the exact, I read it a while ago. But it was an eye-opener for me, I have to tell you. When they talk about kids at that age not knowing or being able to make that decision, I would just recommend, read it. This Is How It Always Is, very interesting book. With that said, I want to support what Mr. Vado said. I agree, the law is broken. But we are obligated to follow the law. And therefore, I will be voting to support. I do agree, we need to have the policy in place. I think it is, it's our obligation to these kids to let them know that yes, we hear you, and we do support you. And there's a policy that now says that. And the policy is pretty strictly just what the law states. So again, I will support it, but totally agree with Mr. Vado that our legislators need to do something about fixing equality for everyone in this. And I don't know how the heck you do that, but, thank you.
Mr. Doring?
Thank you. So as I've shared during the instructional committee meetings, I'm in a lot of ways conflicted about this policy. I wholeheartedly echo what Ms. Reagan, Ms. Costelli said, that it is absolutely unacceptable for our LGBT transgender students to not be receiving the best education, the best culture we could possibly provide them. I was not familiar with GLSEN or with This Is How It Always Is. I will definitely be looking both of those up. At the same time, I agree with Mr. Vado that it is also absolutely unacceptable for any of our other students to not be receiving the absolute best education, culture that we could provide. As much as I am uncomfortable with a lot of what's in the policy, as much as I also think the law is in many ways broken, I do think it is best for us to be communicating clearly how we are doing things, if this is the law, we need to follow the law, and we need to communicate that clearly. So I think having this in policy is good. Although if there is something that could be done with the policy committee to add in protections for other students, I could see that being beneficial as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Doring. Mr. Ross?
Mrs. Papalizi, do we have in place, if a student is uncomfortable in the situation where there's a transgender person coming into their, for instance, their shower stalls or into their game area, is there protection for that student in this?
So this policy does address that any student, regardless of their status, in terms of restrooms and locker rooms, have the right to request an alternate setting, an alternate changing schedule, if for any reason they're uncomfortable whatsoever. So it does address, to a certain extent, Mr. Vado's concerns, as well as answers your question, Mr. Ross, about regardless of your transgender status, you can request an alternate setting for changing in a locker room or in a restroom. It's on page four of the policy, under restroom accessibility and under locker room accessibility.
Thank you. That's what I was hoping you would say. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Ross.
Mrs. Passeretti?
I'll back up a little bit. So I did want to thank the gentleman who came and spoke during public comments. It's kind of a gutsy thing to come up here and talk during public comment, especially for a hot topic like this, so we appreciate that. And I did want to respond briefly. I know we're not supposed to respond during public comment, but this particular, I'm the chair of the policy committee, which I'm not sure if you knew that, but this particular policy reflects Connecticut law. So a lot of the things that were brought up, you know, whether, you know, however people agree or disagree on those particular items, that's how the law, that's how the law has been presented to us. That's what we're required to put in our policy. So I would encourage people to look for a higher authority in our state if they're unhappy with how that has been written. But we are, our hands are tied. We have to put in the policy what Connecticut State has told us to do. I will be voting to push through this policy. And I do agree with Mr. Vado that there are some things that are broken about it. When I first read the policy on the locker rooms and the restrooms, I actually didn't get the same, I didn't read it the same way. Do you have it in front of you? Would you just mind reading that? I don't have it in front of me.
Sure. Under restroom accessibility, it's a short paragraph, so if you don't mind, I'll read the whole thing.
Please do. Thank you.
Students shall have access to the restroom that corresponds to their gender identity consistently asserted at school. Any student who has a need or desire for increased privacy, regardless of the underlying reason, should be provided access to a single-user restroom. However, no student shall be required to use such a restroom because they are transgender or gender nonconforming. In the locker room accessibility section, where it speaks to, this paragraph is lengthier. I'll just read the section that speaks to any student, transgender or not, who has a need or desire for increased privacy, regardless of the underlying reason, should be provided with a reasonable, alternative, changing area, such as the use of a private area, example, a nearby restroom stall with a door, an area separated by a curtain, a PE instructor's office in the locker room, or a nearby health office restroom, or with a separate changing schedule, example, using the locker room that corresponds to their gender identity before or after other students. So while it asserts this particular policy, the right for a transgender student to use a restroom or a locker room that corresponds to their gender identity, it does specifically state, any student has the right for a change of location, for changing, or for the use of a restroom for increased privacy, regardless of the underlying reason.
And do we have the facilities to accommodate a volume of students that would want this accommodation?
Yes, we do.
Thank you. And then lastly, I know that we came under fire recently about removing one of the, removing a sentence from this policy. And if anybody's watching, I'd like for them to, would encourage them to actually watch the meeting where we discussed why we removed the sentence. I think that what's out there on social media is incorrect. I think people are making, making a judgment about why we've removed the sentence. And I would encourage them to go back and actually, and watch it. So, but we have removed, we have removed that sentence, and it was not based out of ignorance, nor was it malice, but it certainly was not ignorance, as someone put. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Passeretti. Mr. Vado, and then Mr. Doring. And then I will go back to see if there's, and then Ms. Reed, sorry. Then I will go back to see if there's any additional public comment.
I just wanted to state a couple of things. I still feel it could be tweaked, the policy as it's written, and be a little more clear. Secondly, I wanted just to address that I understand that there are certain segments or groups of population that need to be heard, and they need to, and people need to be aware of their needs. I'm well aware of that. As the parent of a special needs child, I fought for many, many years to have my child recognized as a student just like the rest of the kids in the school system. And that was not an easy task. And you do that the rest of your life, so I know what that's like. I'm just saying, I would like the policy to be refined. I'm not saying take it away. And then somebody did say, "We're legally," I don't think legally we have to have the policy. Is that correct?
This is a recommended policy. It's not a mandated policy. As you know, from all the policy work that we've done, just to reiterate, not only for the board, but for the public, there are certain, regardless of the law, there are certain policies that were mandated to have in our policy book. This is not one of them. It is the law. As many of you have stated, we are required to follow it, because it is the law. But it is not something that needs to be inclusive in our policy manual. We chose as a policy committee, the board chose as a full board, to include it in our policy manual, because we felt it was important for transparency. We felt it was important for any student who was looking for information, any family who was looking for information as to what their rights were in a public school setting, that it was something that would be accessible at any time without having to call the school and ask the question. So yes, Mr. Vado, no, you don't have to put it in the policy manual itself. But as a board, we've been discussing this for quite some time. It's gone back to policy committee quite a few times. And we've tweaked it along the way, still keeping the intent of what we wanted to share. So hopefully that answers your question.
Well, I'm glad we sent it back to the policy committee a number of times. We have to do our due diligence. And I want to make sure, just like everybody else up here, we want to make sure that we cross every T, dot every I. And I just want to make sure that every child is recognized in the school system. Every child. And the gentleman who spoke earlier did bring up a couple of things to me that I did not realize. They seemed a little, he mentioned something might contradict something else. I mean, I didn't have a chance to go back and really read what he was saying and referring to. And that's another reason I'm saying, gee, maybe that's right. And it's left me with some more doubt. I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that. But it seems like in one instance, we have to protect the identity, but in another instance, you have to, the identity can't be hidden, or something like that. I wrote these things down, but...
So I do want to remind, this is the CAPE model. CAPE does this for a living. I also want to remind the board that our own attorneys, Shipman and Goodwin, read through the CAPE model and said, and provided their legal perspective. So I think Mrs. Costelli said it. There are certainly things within the law that maybe the legislature could iron out. But both parties, CAPE and Shipman, Goodwin, our attorneys, read this policy, felt it was fine as written, and gave us their feedback. So I'm not saying that for any other reason to say that multiple attorneys have looked at this and felt it's in line with the law, the way the law is written, and the way the public school needs to proceed when we're in a situation with a student or a family that is contemplating their decisions in a public school setting.
Mr. Doring?
Thank you. So in terms of the discussions about making alternative accommodations for restrooms and locker room accessibility, I worry that what we have right now in the policy, that's not necessarily a perfect solution either, because I worry that could get stigmatized. Oh, this is a student who's asking for increased privacy. So I'm concerned that could create some issues as well. As we've been discussing, even though this policy isn't required, we're required to be doing everything that's in the policy. In my mind, we owe it to our students, to our teachers, to our families, to have this policy, so they have one place they can look, rather than them needing to go and sort through all the legal references. So at some point, I think we need to push it through. But again, as we've been discussing, I still think there are a lot of issues with it. I don't know what the solutions are, but I think giving it another read through policy committee could be a good idea to try to iron out some of these things.
I'm going to be honest, Mr. Daring. I'm not sure what the policy committee can continue to do into tweaking what your concerns are. And I'm not trying to be difficult, but multiple attorneys have looked at this. The things that people are struggling with aren't necessarily something that the policy committee can fix. And while the policy on one hand gives every student the right, for any reason, to say, "I need more privacy," or whatever, the school administration will handle the confidentiality of that like they've been doing for years, if it's necessary. And I mean no disrespect. But I honestly don't know what else we could put in this to alleviate everyone's concerns. I think case by case, as this comes up within our school system, and we've had it come up at multiple levels, our building administrators, our school counseling offices, handle these things delicately, sensitively, with families of students who are transgender and students who are not, and every case. And that's what we want to do, because we want everyone, regardless of their status, to feel safe and comfortable in school. And this policy allows students to know what their rights are, any student, before they enter that school building, and then with the people within that school building that they trust and respect, sit down and have these hard conversations about what day-to-day experiences will be like in PE, using restrooms, in sports. And our building administrators handle that, those delicate conversations all the time. And they do it like champions for our students.
Thank you.
Mrs. Reed?
Thank you. So I do believe the policy is important in the realm of, I'm going to repeat some of what people have said, but being transparent as a district, that we support our students. I am sure that our administrators and everything that you just said, actually, that have been living the spirit of this for many years now. And the policy, especially reviewed by lawyers, is as best as it can be to cover what we can and who we can. And I can't help but wonder, as adults here, we go back and forth and back and forth. I think our students are more accepting of our world today and the needs of all students, not all of them. But I think for the most part, if our students were up here debating a policy like this, I think they would wonder what's the harm in putting this through. So I just wanted to make that statement, and I will support the policy as put through.
Is there any additional public comment on this? Seeing none, Mrs. Lavelle, can you give us a roll call? Mrs. Costelli?
Yes.
Mr. Doring?
No.
Mrs. Passeretti?
Yes.
Mrs. Reed?
Yes.
Mrs. Reagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Vado? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Mrs. Raccio?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. The last item that we removed from the consent agenda is 7.24, approval of proposed adoption revision of Regulation 5132A, Administrative Regulations Regarding the Dress Code. Any discussion? Mrs. Costelli?
Thank you. I actually asked to have this removed from the consent agenda because I had a clarifying question, but now I have, I think we have another discussion point. My clarifying question was, I wanted to be sure that, because we did leave the hats in place, that teachers would have the opportunity or the right place, that teachers would have the opportunity or the right to tell students that they needed to be removed when they're in their class. I don't know if that solves the problems for the middle school. And you're shaking your head no, right? Anyway, that was my original reason for bringing this forward. So let me just ask this. If we kept it as it is, do teachers have the right to tell the students in class to take off their hats?
That's for us to decide.
No, no, I'm asking if we keep it as it is, we don't make any changes to it, can the teachers tell them to remove their hats? As it's written here, yes?
So you have to go back to the policy to look at that, not the regulation?
Okay.
When you look at the policy itself, it speaks to restrictions being placed when the mode of dress in question, in this case, it would be hats and hoodies, is unsafe or is disruptive to school operations in the educational process. So teachers and admin, if a student is willfully not following the dress code, so for example, flipping kids' hats or pulling the strings of a hoodie down so far that you're not abiding by the policy, staff would have the ability to end that. So could a student walk into a class perfectly compliant, sit down perfectly compliant, and be asked to take their hat off? No, unless it was unsafe to the learning activity of the day. The regulation does speak to that. So certain classes, certain CTE classes, science labs, et cetera, you might be asked to remove your hat due to the nature of what you're being asked to do. If you're being disruptive to the learning environment, you could be asked to remove your hat because you're disrupting the learning environment. So some of the things that were mentioned in public comment, the flipping, the flicking, you know, those types of opportunities, if a student is not following what they need to do, that could be addressed. It's also important to note that in the regulation itself, it speaks to setting expectations, and that really does need to be done. And it's not a one-and-done type of opportunity, as we know, in a classroom environment, it doesn't matter what level. You do have to restate what the expectations for behavior are at the beginning of the year, monthly, sometimes weekly, sometimes after breaks, just like you do with your own children, right? You know, it would be lovely if you just said it once and everybody listened and followed, but that's not necessarily the case. So whether something more needs to be written, I'm not sure, and that certainly can be reflected on. But our staff does need to have the ability to end a disruptive event. The staff does need to have the ability to make a judgment call within their classroom if the learning activity itself involves something that hats or hoodies might be a detriment to. I don't think anybody is in disagreement with that.
That being said, Mr. Corso, I think, did you say that there's been, there's less disciplinary since the kids have been allowed to wear their hoods up?
Yes. So we, right now, we have less students actually wearing hats than we did when we had the no-hat rule, because they're high school students and they like to test the limits, and they love seeing me and my assistant principals get stressed out. So it's actually, I can speak to one specific incident. There was a student that we have that we've had constant battles with wearing a hat. And we're not having that battle, and the relationship between the student and assistant principal is completely moved in a positive direction. And we're doing this attuned school approach this year, working, really understanding the mental, social, emotional health and welfare and stress of the students that we have in the building. And Frank Piccone is one of the directors of the program, and from our perspective at the high school level, this doesn't impact anything in the way of learning or behaviors for us. So it's not something we should be spending our time kind of battling in hallways, which if we did go back, we would absolutely be spending our time battling with students in the hallways over hats, hoodies. And it's just, and I'm a traditionalist, I like to consider myself a traditionalist. The hats bothered me for years, but after seeing what's happened this year with the shift, I just realized, you know, for us, it's just a different time. And sometimes I have to grow as well. So I had to kind of deal with the hats indoors. And like I said, it's really been a positive transformation for Lyman Hall specifically.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? I'm sorry, Mr. Vado, and then Mrs. Roscoe.
To address Mrs. Latour. So it's actually up to the teacher at that time to decide if the hat is being disruptive to the learning process. It's their call. He or she's call at that point.
Yeah, I mean, that's the adult in the room. It's under the, the adult in the room has to make that decision. So if a student, you know, these are our professional educators, right? So if there is an issue within the class with any given student due to a hat or a hood, they would need to make that judgment call like they do a thousand times a day. And then if the student needs, or she, he or she may need backup, that's when our building administration comes into play.
See, to me, that creates more issues, because now it has to go to the next level. If there was a rule that they couldn't wear it in the first place, then there will never be a problem.
No.
But I could have Joe sitting, not Joe, wrong name, I guess, Hughes. I could have Michael sitting in the, you know, the third row over, third seat back, and keeps fiddling with his hat and not paying attention to what's going on. Can I, as a teacher, say, take the hat off because it's disturbing learning in this classroom right now, because you're not paying attention to me, you're too busy worrying about your hat and how it fits on your head? Now, we know they're capable of doing that.
Yeah. I think that's pretty gray, though, right? I mean, if you're, I think there's a lot of gray to this, Mr. Vado, and I don't think there's a black and white answer. I think a student could be fiddling with their pencil, and you're not going to take their pencil away the first time you ask them to stop fiddling with it, right?
Well, maybe the second time, I would.
Maybe the second time. It's no different with a hat or a hoodie, right? If a student is distracted, well, if a student is distracted, you are going to give a redirection. If you have to give a second redirection, that's a different circumstance, but you're not going to do a one-and-done. I don't think you're going to find a whole lot of success in that. It's different, though, right, if a student, it depends on the scenario and the level of safety and the level of disruption that's occurring. You know, it's hard. It's really hard. It depends on the class, the environment, what the child's doing. There are judgment calls all day long when you're in education.
Right. Is it true, Mr. Corso, if I can ask you, up until this year, students at Lyman Hall could never wear a hat?
Correct, hat or hood.
So did you find a problem with that?
Yes. So we spent quite a bit of time walking the hallways, monitoring hallways, and it's a rule that's generally unenforceable throughout a building. So, you know, I only have three assistant principals with me. We have a huge expansive building. We've had some teachers that would address it very aggressively in a proper, the proper way, but asking kids to remove it. We've had others that, you know, didn't want to cause disturbance in the hallway. It was an issue for us, and it occupied quite a bit of the administrator's time. We just don't have that issue this year, allowing hats and hoods. We're not having that conflict. Teachers are more flexible to do what they need to do in between classes, working with students.
Of course, you gave them what they wanted. That's why you wouldn't have the problem.
Yes, but it's not impacting education right now for us. So from my perspective, the most important thing is that we're able to educate the kids and keep them safe, and the hats and hoods are not stopping us from educating them, and we don't have a safety concern at the high school level.
Okay, thank you. And basically, Mr. Snyder, we never had this problem in the middle schools until we passed this policy. Is that correct? Children were not allowed to wear hats or hoods.
They weren't allowed. And finally, we got to a point where we weren't reminding so many students. It would happen once in a while there, I would see a hood up, but they would take it down, but not so much hats. Ever since, really, this school year started, it became more of an issue.
All right, thank you. I just feel that, I think we're spending a lot of time on hats and hoods, believe me. I understand that. I kind of go along, Mrs. Snyder, the politeness thing, I guess that's because of my age, maybe, I don't know. But, you know, I think there are a lot more important things with a dress code that go on in our schools that we should probably be concerned about, some of the outfits, things that are worn by some of our students. But I think we made a decision. I think, I don't know if it was a compromise with the hats on and hoods off, but I'm in favor of leaving the policy the way it is.
Mr. Ross?
Yeah. I get, I get a lot of things here, but I've also heard, and I'm sure most of us, besides the teachers, we've heard from parents who have just gone out and spent $80, $150 on hooded sweatshirts for their kids to wear. I also know that we, as Board of Education, allow hoods, hoodies to be sold in the school.
They can still wear the hoods. They can still wear those sweatshirts.
Right.
They just have to have the hood down.
With it down, okay. So it's just the hat.
Right. Mr. Ross, if you look at the change, I put it in front of you. If you look at the change on page one, under Basic Dress Codes 1E.
E, yeah.
Correct. I struck out, "Hoodies must allow the faceneers to be visible to school staff," and I added, "Students wearing hooded sweatshirts must keep the hood down and off the head while inside the school building." So that means they can wear the hooded sweatshirt, they just can't put the hood up and over.
Yeah. That's fine by me.
Okay.
Mrs. Roscoe.
Thank you. And thank you to the principals for coming and giving your on-the-ground reports. I think it's really helpful. So I think I'm going to throw a monkey wrench in everything, but I'm curious what the board is thinking in terms of the suggestion that was made in differentiating between the high school and the middle school, because I love hearing that the high school administrators are able to have better relationships with students, be able to be focused on, I'll say, disciplinary topics that probably are much more warranted than, in my opinion, hats and hoods, things of much more serious nature. And it clearly is working in our high schools. It clearly is potentially not working in our middle schools, per the reports that we're hearing and per the emails that we've received. So I really would not be opposed to splitting it, because there is a maturity difference between the age groups. And I think not acknowledging that and thinking, you know, one, I don't know, I feel like maybe everyone is not going to love my comments here, but I just think it's something to be said. I think it was a great suggestion, because we're not dealing with people of all the same age. And so I would love to hear some of the thoughts on that, not to continue to berate this topic, yes.
Can I just clarify one thing?
Yeah.
We just probably want to also consider what we want to do at the elementary level as well. That's what I was just thinking as you were talking. So if we, totally fine if you guys want to decide middle school, high school differentiated, but I think we probably should also consider what we want to do at the elementary level.
Yes, absolutely. I guess in my mind, it would just be the high school, you know, we're talking about maturity at some, on some level. And so probably everything, high school, you know, high school standing on its own is sort of the way I was thinking about it. And then middle school and below, having a different criteria. But that's just my opinion.
Thank you, Mrs. Roscoe. Mrs. Reed? And then, yeah, we'll go down to Mrs. Costelli and Mr. Doring.
I would say, I would kind of echo what you've said, in that I think, you know, our principals came with, if I'm understanding correctly, our principals came with their own solution, really compromising with each other, in that the high school would like the policy to fit so that they don't, the students, if I'm understanding correctly, the students don't have, we don't have to say that they can't wear hoods or hats. However, the middle school would like us, as a board, to put into policy that they are not allowed to wear hats or hoods. I understand that correctly. Okay. I think that, you know, it's, again, echoing what you said, Ms. Roscoe, that they've come with a solution for us to consider, and I think that's really important, to validate what they have to say based on what they're experiencing in their schools. And I would agree with you that high school does bring a different level of maturity, and we're trying to get them even more mature than that. And so giving them some leeway in what they're doing there is probably a helpful thing in helping them to grow also as people and students and citizens. So I think I would go along with that wrench you're throwing in things and consider what the principals have brought to us.
Mrs. Costelli, then Mr. Doring.
Yes, I completely, okay, sorry, I turned myself off. I completely agree that we should take to heart what our administrators are here telling us is the reality on, you know, they're the boots on the ground. I'd like to suggest that we ask Mrs. Latour to go back, and I kind of just, something to this extent, hats and other headwear are not allowed in middle, well, and we can talk about elementary, but are not allowed in middle school at all, including hoodies. Well, no, I'm sorry. Not, hats and other headwear are not allowed in middle school within the building. Hooded sweatshirts are allowed, but hoods must be worn down. At the high school level, it's the student's choice, or however we want to say it. At the high school level, the hoodies and hats can be worn, since that's not causing a problem right now. And then the only thing left would be elementary, which I would assume we'd probably want to have it be coordinated with the middle school. So elementary and middle school, uh-oh, what? No hoods? Or do you think the opposite? I mean, I don't, I could go either way with that. I don't, we've never heard of any issues with, that I'm aware of.
So that, sorry, excuse me. The only hesitation I have with the elementary school, in all transparency, is I have not heard any complaints either way from the elementary principals. So while we are respecting the middle school and the high school administration, my only concern is they have not reported any concerns with the hats and the hoodies down at the elementary level. And so to arbitrarily take it away from them, I'm just a little concerned about that, because I haven't heard anything either way. So there hasn't been an issue with them wearing them.
With them wearing them, okay. Which, how, I really, I'm more concerned with making sure that the middle schools and the high school, which is where the issue seems to be.
Correct.
Is handled so that our administrators' lives are a little bit easier.
Mr. Doring.
Thank you. So I would echo what all the other board members have been saying so far. There certainly is an age and maturity difference between a middle school student and a high school student. We're not in the schools all day, every day, the way our administrators are. So when we have feedback coming in from them, and not that I think we're under obligation to pursue every piece of feedback any person ever gives us about anything, by any stretch of the imagination, but if we have feedback coming in from our administrators who are in the schools every day, they're speaking as to what works, what doesn't work. Our ultimate goal is to educate students. We shouldn't have to be spending a lot of time worrying about hats and hoodies. So we have this feedback, I think we should honor it. Then in regards to the elementary schools, I'm kind of indifferent as to that one, too, but whatever's pragmatic, I'd be good either way with that one. Thank you.
Mrs. Passeretti, then Mr. Vado.
Yeah, I'm in favor of the middle schools not being allowed to wear the hats, and the rest is fine, hooded sweatshirts, but the hoods have to be kept down. I don't, I certainly now see the benefit to the high school students wearing hats. You made a compelling argument about the relationships that you've been able to make, because you don't have that extra barrier of constantly fighting with them. But the middle schoolers, and I've had three middle schoolers at home, they're different breeds of cat, so, and I'm not, you know, I'm hoping, I'm hoping that six months from now, there isn't another issue that crops up where, oh, now we, now we shouldn't have backpacks for the middle schoolers. I hope it doesn't, it's not replaced by something else. One of the questions that I had throughout this process is what type of discipline has been instilled and when these, when these things crop up. So any child putting their hands on another child, even though it's a hat, it's still assault. It's assault. Has there been discipline given to these children that have been, that have put their hands on other children? That's the, yeah, please, Mr. Snyder. That's the, yeah, please, Mr. Snyder. It's the one thing that, as a parent, I would feel, that's the part that bothers me is that there's physical altercations happening.
So I'm not suggesting that every time someone's hood is pulled down or a hat is flipped over, it turns into a physical altercation. I guess I respectfully disagree that someone flipping someone's hat off is an assault. I would categorize it differently. I, you know, there's, our students, we have 598 of them, and there is just limitless energy that they have. I don't think there's any malice behind them doing it. So much of what we're seeing on a daily basis, our students are saying it's all a joke. You know, that's a little bit about our culture, too.
Be teasing. I've seen kids tripping other kids, thinking it's funny. And then they have, then now they're missing teeth because they think it's funny.
We look at this on an individual basis. When it has resulted in an actual, if someone's hat is flipped off and it actually does step up to another level and it is a physical problem, yes, they are, there are consequences given. But, you know, there's a lot of different, over the years, you know, we deal with a lot of different physical things, and we look at those as individual instances. But yes, we do address it when it does happen. You know, our staff, both Moran and, I know Moran's done this, but certainly Dag, where we talk about restorative practices. Where not every single item is met with an actual consequence given. Sometimes there are ways of restoring and bringing back the relationship. So, you know, we have those conversations, but we have to look at the individual who is doing it and the spirit behind it. So no, we have given consequences, and we also have had just conversations and calls home, too. Depends on the actual example and the situation.
Thank you. Mr. Ross.
I came in here with one opinion. My opinion has been changed. I'm in agreement that we should allow the middle schools to not wear hats or hoodies. However, and I'm going to throw a thing in that, except for religious reasons. And that would be mostly the women that wear the bukas, I think they call them. I think that would have to be clearly stated. And there are some religions where the men wear headgear all the time. So I think, other than that, my mind has been changed.
I think in the policy itself, we address that religious headwear is not being referred to in this regulation.
That, yeah, because there's law for that. We don't have to have that. Mr. Vado.
I believe when we first handled this policy, we were concerned with hoodies hiding electronic equipment, whatever you call them, the earbuds or something in their ears, which could cause other issues. And that was one of our concerns. So with all due respect to the principals, because they came here tonight and said what they had to say, are we now okay with that? Can they wear their hoods all the way up and hide whatever in their ears? I don't know. I beg your pardon?
I think we're still suggesting that the hoods are down.
In a high school?
Not in the high.
Talking high school.
I'm sorry, you have to use the microphone?
I'm sorry. So, Mr. Vado, it seems from the reports that they're not having trouble with earbuds and technology because there's no disciplinary action being taken? Or what, or what we're being?
I've heard issues from teachers that are having problems with that. I can't believe, with all due respect, Mr. Carso and Mr. Zaco, that, how many high school kids do we have? Eighteen hundred, seventeen hundred? That not one kid wears a hood without covering their ears. And if they do, they tuck it behind their ear. I just, to me, to see a child walk around with a hood, pull tight, string tight, and you barely see their face, I think that's disruptive to the learning environment. We don't know what they're hiding behind the hood. With all due respect to everybody out there listening, there are some issues that we have to deal with. And I think that's one of, that is a practice that will create some issues.
But we're being told by the high schools that is not an issue.
We have had students that have had earbuds in. We've simply just said, hey, can you take your earbuds out if they've had them in? And we haven't had that negative interaction. They've been compliant with taking their earbuds off.
Mrs. Latour. How you doing?
I'm doing great. So I have a draft, because if you change language, you're going to need to agree on it tonight, or else it has to go back to policy. And then you're not taking consent on this until January, which I'm sensing no one really wants to do.
We don't want to bring it back to policy.
So I feel like if we are, as a board, good with the elementary school and high school keeping the things the way they are because there is no perceived issue. We keep E as written originally, with the hoodies behind the ears, right? And then we add a separate section for, at the middle school level, hats, headwear, and wearing hoodies on your head is not allowed, except for religious reasons. I don't think that it is a bad thing to restate the religious exception in the regulation, even though the policy states it. So E would read, at the elementary school and high school level, hats and other hoodware must allow the face and ears to be visible to staff and not interfere with the line of sight of any student or staff. Hoodies must allow the face and ears to be visible to school staff. Then I would do like a space. At the middle school level, hats, headwear, and wearing hoodies on your head is not allowed. Students wearing hooded sweatshirts must keep the hood down and off the head while inside the school building. And then I would include, except for religious reasons, about the hats and the hood wear. So each level would have its own section, very clearly written.
Can you just repeat the first? I just want to.
Sure.
Not the high school. I want to just repeat.
Middle school? At the middle school level, I feel like I'm like on the hot seat right now. Hats, headwear, hats and headwear must allow the face and ears to be visible, no. At the middle school level, hats and headwear are not allowed, except for religious reasons, and wearing hoodies on your head is not allowed. Students wearing hooded sweatshirts must keep the hood down and off the head while inside the school building.
Can you please, because when you refer hoodies are not allowed on the head, I think people are going to assume that you're talking about the entire hooded sweatshirt. Hoods are not allowed to be on the head. Hoodies, they can wear hoodies. Like a hoodie is the whole thing. The hood is the top.
Okay, so I could do, at the middle school level, hats, head, hats and headwear are not allowed, except for religious reasons. And then I could say, students wearing hooded sweatshirts must keep the hood down and off the head while inside the school building. Just keep it at that?
Yes, I would agree. And I have a motion to accept.
Wait, I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
I want to confirm with the high school principals that behind the ears is not an issue for you guys?
Mr. Carso, can you come up to the mic? Or Mr. Zaco, who can ever address that? Sorry, you're not getting picked up.
Sure, sorry. I don't, I don't really care, and it hasn't been impactful if the ears are covered. I'll support whatever side of that policy and how you want to write it. It hasn't been an issue for us. And again, you know, I think it's difficult to police exactly what behind the ears is. But again, it's the way it's written now, and we're not having any issues with it. So again, I would defer to the board on that piece.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Can I have a motion to accept the amended policy as Mrs. Latour presented? Ms. Reed made the motion. Can I have a second? Mrs. Castelli made a second. Mrs. Lavelle, can you please do a roll call? We could do, do we want, okay, further discussion. We have a first and a second. Further discussion on the motion. Mr. Ross.
So as I'm hearing it, we're saying that the middle school students can wear hooded sweatshirts, but just not on their heads.
That is correct.
Is that, is that what you're looking for, sir?
I have no qualms. No qualms at all with students wearing a hooded sweatshirt. You're right, they are expensive, just not bringing the hood up.
Okay, thank you.
We're not addressing it because it hasn't been an issue. We're leaving that as is.
So it says they have to be behind the ear?
Yes, we're not. Any further discussion? Okay, we have a first and a second. Mrs. Lavelle, can you do a roll call for us? Mrs. Castelli?
Yes.
Mr. Doring?
Yes.
Mrs. Passeretti?
Yes.
Mrs. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Regan?
Yes.
Mrs. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Vado?
No.
Mrs. Raciio?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. That was our last item removed from consent. Moving on to Section Nine, we are up to correspondence. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mrs. Raciio. We just have one thank you this evening. And I just want to acknowledge Lori Cook Mara and the Rotary of Wallingford for their donation in the amount of $2,856 to the principals' grades three through five schools. And the donation was dictionaries and thesauri for the students to use. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Roscoe. Moving on to committee reports. ACES Governing Board. Mr. Ross.
Yes, thank you. We had an interesting meeting this week. We addressed the problem of hiring teachers. And the solution they have done is there's a company called Express Employment in North Haven. We are contracting with them, and we will pay them $1,200 per person to supply us with teachers, which will be paid after the teacher's there ninety days. We also have allowed that employees, if they can get it, bring us a teacher, referral, they'll get a $500 bonus, $250 at hiring, and $250 after ninety days. The other thing I'm kind of surprised at is the COVID counts. Our COVID counts are minuscule compared to what I'm hearing. We have nineteen COVID cases, new cases, reported over the past thirty days of all our schools and all the districts. And the other thing, we discussed the Head Start program, which is being implemented in a big way. And there'll be more coming that up at the next meeting. Aside from that, that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Systemwide PTAC update. Mrs. Latour.
So this month's systemwide PTAC meeting was a committee meeting, and that was canceled. So our next meeting is January seventeenth, 2023. That'll be a virtual meeting, and an agenda will be sent about a week before the meeting takes place.
Excellent, thank you. Special education PTAC update. Mrs. Turner.
Good evening. Our PTAC met on November twenty-ninth. We had several teachers, as well as parents, attend. We had a representative from BRS discuss how to support your child in transitioning to life after high school, as well as some job supports, job coaching during high school for some students sixteen years and up. And this is for students with IEPs and 504s. It was very well received. We do not have a meeting this month due to the holiday. We will be meeting again in January, and we will be having a presenter speak with families regarding mental health and supporting their child with mental health in the home environment.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Mrs. Latour and Mrs. Turner. Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee, Dr. Thompson.
We have our meeting, our December meeting tomorrow. And we actually have nine students on the committee now. So we're very excited to get our students' voices and begin our planning for the district.
That is wonderful. I don't want to throw any monkey wrenches in, but I'm hoping some of the plans involve a policy. Maybe, maybe. Moving on to the Cabe report. Mrs. Belizzi sent a link out to all board members in her Friday update last week where Cabe highlighted its 2023 legislative session initiatives. And if the board members had a chance to click on that link and look at it, the reading programs mandated by the state is one of the Cabe legislative priorities. So I know Mrs. Belizzi is going to speak more about that. But I did want to share that that's on their list to look at for the 2023 session. I also want to bring to the board's attention, just as a comment right now, that there was a quite a robust discussion on the Cabe Chair listserv about teachers being allowed, out-of-district teachers being allowed to bring their children into the district in which they teach as a benefit, as part of them teaching. It hasn't been, in most of the districts, it was not free. For example, in Glastonbury, if you work out, if you live outside of Glastonbury and you work in Glastonbury, you can bring your children to the Glastonbury school system for $1,000 per child per year. If there's a special education student, you bear the cost of the special education. But as a benefit to teachers who, whether it's transportation or other issues, that was one of the things that I had not heard of that came up in the chair listserv. And I thought that was interesting and just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. That is all I have for the Cabe report. Moving on to number eleven.
Excuse me, Mrs. Raciio. Did we, unless I fell asleep, food services, did we do that?
Did I skip that? I crossed it off and I skipped it. Mr. Bondi, oh, and there's so much to talk about for food services. We could be here well, well past. Mr. Bondi, food services, would you like to come up and share with us? You have to come to the microphone, or otherwise they're going to give me a blinking light here.
Unfortunately, due to this shortness of the month, we have not had a meeting in December.
Okay.
Our next meeting will be in January.
Mrs. Castelli was quicker than we wanted, huh? I know. Old business, I don't believe we have any. Number twelve instructional committee, that would be Mrs. Passeretti and Mr. Vado.
Thank you, Mrs. Raciio. First, on the agenda for the instructional committee business, we have 12.1, approval of acceptance of retirements. I make a motion that the Board of Education accept the retirement of Natalie Bowman effective June thirtieth, 2023. Natalie Bowman has been a middle school teacher since August of 1994 for a total of twenty-nine years in the Wallingford Public Schools.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. Next, I make a motion that the Board of Education accept the retirement of Claudia Marcello effective June thirtieth, 2023. Claudia Marcello has been agricultural education teacher since August of 1990 for a total of thirty-three years in the Wallingford Public Schools.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. I make a motion that the Board of Education accept the retirement of John Morrison effective June thirtieth, 2023. John Morrison has been a middle school teacher since August of 1996 for a total of twenty-seven years in the Wallingford Public Schools.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Abstentions, the motion carries. I make a motion that the Board of Education accept the retirement of Robert Nelson effective June thirtieth, 2023. Robert Nelson was hired in September of 1991 as a special education teacher. He became a step teacher in 2003, and then a computer teacher in 2008. In 2016, he returned to being a special education teacher for a total of thirty-two years in the Wallingford Public Schools. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. I make a motion that the Board of Education accept the retirement of Will I make a motion that the Board of Education accept the retirement of Wilfred Velez effective June 30th, 2023. Wilfred Velez has been an elementary bilingual teacher since August of 2005 for a total of 18 years in the Wallingford Public Schools. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. And I wish I did the math on that, but that is a lot of years of service to our community. So we are very grateful to all those individuals that we just mentioned. Next order of business for the Instructional Committee, 12.2, Approval of Acceptance of Resignation. I would like to make a motion that the Board of Education accept the resignation of Emily Picard effective January 1st, 2023. Emily Picard has been an agricultural education teacher since August of 2010.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions, motion carries. That is all I have for the Instructional Committee business. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Passeretti and Mr. Vado. Moving on to item 13, Operations Committee. I will turn that over to Mrs. Regan and Mrs. Costelli.
I'll take that because Mrs. Regan wasn't able to attend, yeah.
The chief there, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Barone reported that there was a $34,935 unencumbered balances from the 2021-2022 school year. The town council will be asked if these funds can be added to the 2% account. They were asked, and they did agree, so that money has been moved or will be moved into our 2% account. The consensus, yeah. Cafeteria report, Mr. Bondi reported that there was a projected monthly surplus of $112,518 and a year-to-date surplus of $307,336. There were 84,200 meals served in November. Mr. Bondi reported that the balance of the smart fund, which is from the state, were expected to be expended in November. And I believe that is true, has happened, and we are now back to kids having to pay for lunch if they don't qualify for the free or reduced. Mr. Deptula gave us a maintenance and facilities project update. Reported that the Highland gym floor price has increased, and the gas tank for the warehouse should be arriving in a week. The turf snow removal attachment has been received, but not invoiced yet. He also explained that the magnetic door, he explained about the magnetic door openers and, you know, how those work. And I wouldn't begin to try to explain that, so if anybody wants to know, you have to ask Mr. Deptula. Ms. Belizzi spoke about the strategic plans that are linked to the agenda and answered some questions about how the strategic plans process works. And I know in our packet this week, we also received the Adult Education Strategic Plan, so thank you very much for that. Any questions? That's it.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item 14, new business. I do not believe we have any, so I will turn it over to Superintendent Belizzi for the administrative report.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. Before I get into my report, I just want to make sure I recognize some of the donations we have received that are under $500. That at Pontill School, they received a donation from Beaumont Farms of 290 small pumpkins. So we want to just say thank you to them for that. It had a value of $290. In addition, Pontill also received assorted school supplies from Staples, and so that was also a value of $250 as well. So we thank Staples as well. And lastly, from Wallingford Wishingwell, we were in receipt of children's underwear and socks to the nurse's office. So we appreciate those as well, all three from Pontill. So I wanted to make sure I recognized all of those three donors on behalf of our students. So moving into some of the reports that we wanted to share tonight, I'm going to start off with a meeting that was held last Thursday with Mrs. Latour, Mrs. Turner, Dr. Thompson, Mrs. Raciio attended, and myself with Mayor Dickinson. And the purpose of that meeting was to review our district's student achievement data, our demographics, and our next steps for the district, both academically and social-emotional needs, what we're doing basically right now and moving forward to meet all the needs of our students. The reason why we had this meeting was the mayor had requested to meet with us just to sort of go over the information that we provided him in the fall. And also primarily in response, he had given us a copy of, I believe it's a Hartford Current article back from the fall of 2022, where the U.S. Secretary of Education, Miguel Cardona, had made a comment about NEAP results, stating that it was the largest ever recorded drop in the national, he was really specifically talking about math, but performance and found it appalling and unacceptable. And so the mayor wanted to just have conversation with us about that and just talk about what we've been doing. So I did provide to all of you in last Friday's weekly update the presentation that we provided to the mayor. The one that Mrs. Latour had done in the fall, which was extremely detailed and very thorough, he did receive a copy of that, a hard copy, back in the fall. But we want, we really didn't have an opportunity to really discuss any of that with him. So this presentation that I shared with all of you kind of just reviewed where we were in our smarter balance results. We went over what those results are. We discussed with him some of the impacts and some of the reasons why we think we are where we are, some based on COVID, and then some based on our demographics. We further discussed with him where we are as a district in terms of what we're providing to our certified and non-certified staff in terms of professional development opportunities, resources for our families, in terms of additional social workers that can provide resources to the families and to the students during the day. We talked about additional staffing that we have in terms of instructional support staff, additional social workers. We also reviewed the changes that we're seeing and experiencing in terms of the number of two-on-one calls that our schools are making. We shared with him a graph, which was in that presentation, that really delineated the difference between where we were last year and where we are this year. There's definitely an increase in the need of families reaching out to two-on-one and our social workers reaching out to two-on-one for supports. In addition, we talked to him and shared, Mrs. Turner shared the data regarding students who are homeless and families that are homeless. I did provide him with the website. I provided all of you with that website as well, where it's updated daily. And it did provide some very telling information that our numbers really have increased from where we were. And it does delineate both in a percentage and in a number, or count, as they call it on the website. So the number for Wallingford as a whole, including the district, for housing and shelter requests are really up to 669, which is 22.6%. So, you know, we're continuing to look at that. And our requirement under McKinne Vento is that we continue to provide our students with the education here in Wallingford Public Schools. We link them up with the resources that they need to be able to find housing or shelters, which is not something that we provide, but we provide them with opportunities to reach out to people. We also then provide their students with transportation to and from school, from wherever they're living and wherever they're placed, moving forward. Additionally, we went over with him, the, he had called me back on Friday asking for our numbers currently for free and reduced. As you recall, starting December 1st, universal feeding has ended for us. And so now we are continuing, as we have at the beginning of the school year. But we are continuing to make sure that families who need them are reaching out and filling out the free and reduced applications. So the mayor did call me back on Friday and ask for some of that information as well, just where we are as a district. So I did provide with him the most up-to-date information that Mr. Bondi was able to share with me, that right now, total number of free is at 1,384, our reduced is at 340, and our total full price is at 3,682. Keeping in mind, we have roughly, you know, 5,469 students. As Mr. Bondi has reported in the past, and I think he did at the Operations Committee meeting, he is, his office is still receiving at least 12 to 15 applications a day. They're doing a fabulous job. They're processing as quickly as they can and continuing to message out through Parents Square how to access the application and get the needs and the help that they need moving forward. So we're going to continue to do that as well. One of the last things we discussed, or two last things we discussed with the mayor as well, was the, we shared the discipline data that I had shared with all of you, just to kind of briefly touch on some of the things that we're experiencing at the high schools and the middle schools, which led into a brief discussion about our SROs. You know, we have been trying as best we can to make sure we have one full-time SRO at each of our high schools. At times, that is a little bit challenging, because if someone at the police department is absent or calls out, then ultimately, they end up pulling one of our SROs to cover someone. So I have been working with the police chief on that to try and see if there's ways that we can work together to kind of remedy that, but also to highlight that there is a need also, in my opinion, to have additional supports at the middle schools as well. The last thing we discussed with the mayor was the new legislation that has come to light that we've talked about numerous times, and I know Mrs. Latour is going to share some of what we've been working on, but under the Right to Read Act. And so we did bring him up to date as to what all of that means, what it entails. Mrs. Latour shared the work that she's been doing right now to kind of review those programs, which she'll share in a minute. But we did share with him the current legislation. I did follow up with a letter that was sent by Fran Robinowitz on behalf of all of the superintendents to the state. Mrs. Raciio has brought up that it's going to be part of the legislation again to be reviewed. But he was very supportive throughout the entire meeting. It was extremely informative. And I think, you know, he left feeling like he has a better understanding as to some of the, you know, the strengths of the district, obviously, the wonderful things that are going on with our staff and our students and our families, but also some of the day-to-day, you know, obstacles that we're facing, but all of the wonderful things that we have put in place to be able to support, and we continue to do. So all in all, it was a wonderful meeting, and it was very informative as we moved through.
Thank you very much, and I echo your comments. It was a pleasure to meet with him, and he was very receptive and willing to help any way he can as far as legislation and things that are coming up in this session. We did agree to meet several times a year, just so that we all stay on the same page, and he knows what's coming. He was as disappointed in the legislation of forcing us to choose a large publisher program and throw out any curriculum that we have for the sake of just choosing one of the six that the state picked for us. So it was very good. I thank you for inviting me and for scheduling that. Mrs. Latour, we haven't heard from you yet tonight.
So last week, we had a district early release day for the purposes of professional development at the elementary level. It was a building-based day. And just to specify what that means, every building has their own professional development committee. They surveyed their teachers to determine areas of need. And then they put on various sessions that their staff could choose from, aligned to those survey results to provide professional development. At the middle school and high school level, it was run a little bit differently. Some departments had self-directed days, which meant that the teachers could choose which type of professional development opportunity they would like. Some chose to work on curriculum, some chose to, you know, delve into professional topics of interest. It runs a little bit differently at each department for each teacher, as well as some departments had the opportunity to work with their curriculum coordinator on district-led initiatives. As I explained to you last month, we embarked on a multi-day, multi-evening journey with a committee to look at the seven mandated reading programs that the state approved through the Right to Read legislation. I am pleased to say that that committee hung tough on several late nights. The committee was comprised of both district and building administrators, teachers from grades K through three, and we did have representatives from every grade level, as well as special education and intervention, as well as a literacy coach. Each publisher came in and did a one-hour presentation. And then the committee debriefed not only on the presentation, but had some time to then review materials, talk to one another, reflect on the presentation itself and questions that were asked and answers. And at the conclusion of the four days that we spent together looking at these programs, I can definitely tell you that some, we determined, just were not going to be a good fit for our district based on materials, content, efficiency, time. Within the school day to teach literacy, some of these programs required upwards of three hours of just literacy time. And while we feel literacy is very important, we also have other content to teach during the school day. We have several that our next steps will be to take a deeper dive, invite the publishers back for a little bit of a longer presentation so that we can get more into the nitty-gritty of how this looks with our students and how this looks within our literacy block. We also received the much anticipated waiver from the state of Connecticut last Thursday evening at 5:30. So we have, or I have, as well as several others, Mrs. Bukary especially poured over the waiver and what the criteria is and the requirements. And we will prepare to get our materials together. The waiver is due February 28th at 5 o'clock. And we do anticipate submitting our curriculum to the state for their review while simultaneously continuing to look at the programs and see which is the right fit, because we do not know when we would hear back from the state. So we feel that we would be negligent and not pursuing both paths at this time. So I will continue to keep the board posted on what we're doing and where we're going. The publishers that we felt had a good connection to our school system and students and our district curriculum were able to provide us other districts in the area that are utilizing their materials. So that's the next step for us, for a small group, to go out and kind of see what it looks like in the classroom and how it melds with what we're doing and what our philosophies are and our priorities are for our students. We have two months to do quite a bit of work, but we are up for the challenge and making sure that we have the right fit for our students for the upcoming school year. Does the board have any questions? Is this, Dr. Reed?
Yeah, so if I heard you correctly, you're putting in the waiver, but you will come to a point where you still might not have received that waiver response back. In the meantime, you're looking into these programs. Is there a certain drop-down point when you would have to purchase? Is one question, something? And also, are we agreeing? Are you finding that what we currently do is not on the board at all to continue doing?
No, I don't think it's on the board to not continue doing it. We firmly believe that we're aligned with the science of reading, and what we're doing is best practice for students. And we feel that after looking at some of these programs in a lot of areas, what we're doing, we feel the materials are a better fit for our students. Let's just say that. As for a drop-dead date, that's a really hard question to answer. I don't have a guarantee yet as to when we'll hear back regarding the waiver, but I also, from my lens, need time to order, receive materials, provide professional development, all before either teachers leave in June, because the two days we have before school starts is not going to be enough time. And that is a tough position to be in. So as we kind of wind down our discussions with these programs and the personnel that work for these publishers, questions such as timing and receipt of materials and lead time will all come up, and we'll have to make some hard decisions at that point. So we do have money budgeted and earmarked for the purchase of a program. One of our next steps, obviously, is to get ballpark figures from these programs to ensure, one, that I budgeted enough money, or if by some miracle I've budgeted way too much money, Mr. Barone will be quite pleased with me that I can do an immediate cut to my budget. So we'll see. Any other questions?
Mr. Vado?
How much did we budget for that?
So I budgeted a placeholder in next year's budget for a total of $700,000 for a new reading program, because it is for K through three. So that's four grade levels. And, you know, each program obviously has its And, you know, each program obviously has its core program and then the à la carte that comes with it. So not really knowing. We haven't bought an elementary program in quite a few years. It'll be interesting to see kind of what their ballpark is.
I'm not sure if you answered this for Mrs. Reed or not, but do our teachers feel like what they have now is adequate?
Yes, they do. I'm sure, you know, I didn't poll every single elementary teacher. But, you know, it was really nice. It was nice for us to sit in that committee and hear about the successes the teachers are having with their students within their classrooms. It was nice to hear the, oh, wow, our decodables are better than that, or our process is better than that. Because we've worked really hard over the last five to six years in the curriculum office to align with best practice and research, to give staff what they need to meet the varying needs and abilities within their classroom, to professionally develop our teachers. Because we know teachers don't have or don't get enough reading theory in their degree programs coming out of colleges. So what we do through our curriculum, through our work with literacy how, we know that things are clicking and staff feels good about what they're doing. Would we love more time? Absolutely. I don't think there's a teacher on earth that wouldn't say that we need more time. Or we need more flexibility within the schedule to teach the core content. And we're working on that. We're working on aligning. We're working on trying to integrate social studies and science more seamlessly because the school day's six hours and 25 minutes. And for an elementary teacher, they're teaching four major content areas. So those are the things that we're continuing to work on within our own curriculum. And those are the things that we're looking at really closely while sitting through these presentations to see where we can see maybe getting some efficiency from these programs so that we're not feeling like our teachers' plates are so full. We're looking at the resources that allow for UDL, that allow for differentiation for our students, that allow for integration of social studies and science to, if we have to go with a program and it's going to be brand-new, how can we leverage some of the efficiencies that a big-box program might provide? So we're looking at the bright sides while we continue to train, provide professional development, discuss our own curriculum, and tweak it in a way that meets everybody's needs.
Now, those things you just mentioned, are you saying that that is a weakness in the area right now?
No.
The integration, just looking for better ways of doing it?
Better ways. You know, we, our curriculums are homegrown. So anytime we can look at what we're doing and compare it to something, we're going to do that. And we're going to see a ton of things, and I mean a ton, of things that are in our curriculum that are really strong, solid, and that we do well. But then there are all, you know, as educators, you're always looking at what else is out there, and things pop up. And you're like, oh, okay, we could do that. And so, you know, we're just, we're trying to, as I said, see the positives in this and see what we can continue to refine on and tweak. While absolutely, and I cannot state this more strongly, we are very firm in our beliefs of our curriculum and where our staff is and what they're doing with our students every day. And the hard work of Angela Bukary, of the literacy coaches, of the building principals, of the teachers to meet our students' needs with the curriculum that we have. They've gone through a lot of change in the last few years, a lot of PD with literacy how. And everybody has embraced it, and our students are better for it. So I can't thank everybody enough. And so we'll see where we land.
I just think it's paramount that we make sure, if we do adapt any new program, that it does have that integration. And also, the amount of time, you mentioned something before about.
I did. So we have a 90, it's huge, right? We have a 90-minute literacy block right now. And there are many programs that we looked at that look at a 90-minute to 120-minute literacy block. And then there's a program that had a three-hour literacy block. And we're like, when do you teach math and social studies and science? And then you have specials and lunch. And, you know, there are a lot of things that go on in an elementary school day. So those are all the things that we're looking at, because we don't want to bring something in that is going to raise the level of stress and anxiety on top of already worrying about this is a brand-new program that I have to learn, so.
Are any of the companies offering parts of their program? I know they don't like to do that, but let's say I'm going and looking at a program, and I say, you know, this is the one thing we do not have that I would like to have. Would we, I mean, not all companies would do that, but would they be willing, do you think, any of them, to sell us a part of it?
So, yeah, you know, I think every program that we saw has a core. And then they have some, as I said, à la carte items. Just like we are also looking at some of these programs with the lens of how will this instructional resource fit into some of the components that we feel very strongly about within our own curriculum? And still lacking some of that guidance from the state of how much we can blend the two together. Time will tell a little bit on that one. But we really are trying to look at it with, from a vantage point of being as flexible as we can. So to keep some of the things that have worked really well, that we're seeing good results from at the early grades, while still staying true to the legislation with these programs.
And we, did you ask us, you are comparing schools that already have some of these programs?
Yes, so we asked each representative to provide us, whether it's schools within this state or New York, Rhode Island, Massachusetts in some cases. And so we have already reached out to some schools to look at one of the programs in real life with kids, speaking with staff from that school who utilize it, to see how it's going.
And when did you say the drop date was, drop date for the handing in the waiver?
So the waiver is due February 28th.
I mean, this really is crunch time.
It really is.
If we don't get that, how long are they going to give us, how long are they going to take to decide, you know?
I don't really know. Originally, they said it might be April-ish. I really don't know. I really honestly don't know.
So by the time you order the stuff and have some of the PD.
I know. We have, yeah, there's a lot, quite honestly. And it's really early to know. But if.
I mean, I hope we don't have to, you know.
I hope we don't have to either.
We can borrow one steel from other ones.
To be honest. But if we do, then we have to be able to move quite quickly in the purchasing, receiving. And then the professional development, question mark, is going to be huge in terms of what our staff needs to be able to hit the ground running on the first day of school next year. And so I'm just going to put that out there as a blanket statement right now. Because the K3 team is going to need some time. And how we do that, we're going to need to be able to think creatively about that.
Do you think your $700,000 will maybe help with paying for PD over the summer?
No, that's for program. You have to speak into the microphone. You're getting dinged.
Oh, is that what that's for?
Sorry.
That's your timer.
I don't know. I am thinking the $700,000 I have budgeted is for materials, not for PD over the summer. And I'm going to be honest, Mr. Vado, summertime PD is really hard to get people to do.
I know, but.
And for something like this, I can't have a few. I need everybody. So I think, you know, we're in the process of coming up with some creative ideas for PD that, of course, we'll bring to the board. But it is something that if, and these are big ifs, right? If we go down that road and if we have to do this, and if we get the materials on time before this school year ends, we're going to have to come up with some solutions on how we give people everything they need to be successful for the first day of school.
Can we provide, I'm sorry, folks, I know you want to go, but.
Sorry. Oh, I'm so sorry. I could talk all night.
And this is my thing, too. I mean, that's why we're here. Is it possible for our faculty members who are on this committee, for instance, to visit another school system that is using?
Absolutely, yeah.
For a day and see what it's like and have, talk to the teachers about it? I mean, if we're going to do this, let's do it.
I don't disagree with you.
Because $700,000 is a lot of money. We want to make sure we get the best for them.
Yep, I hear you.
Or if we have the best already, we're even better.
Yep.
Okay, sorry for taking up.
Sorry, oh, so sorry. Oh, Mrs. Costelli has her hand raised.
Okay, so I want to make sure I'm clear on this, and I want to make sure the public is clear on this as well. This waiver, if we are granted the waiver, that means we don't have to take any one of these seven programs. We can keep what we have or do whatever else we want.
No, it would be, we have to keep what we have. Because part of the waiver is submitting your current curriculum and your resources and showing its alignment to the things that they're looking for. So it wouldn't be a situation of, we don't want these seven programs, but we're also going to stray off and do something totally different. You have to submit your curriculum.
Okay, all right, so we would stick with what we have.
Right.
My question, and I know you probably don't know the answer to this, but I want to know, where did the state come up with these seven programs out of how many are out there?
So.
The best salesman got a hold of them and sold them there?
No, no, I will say that there was an open period last spring for publishing companies and/or school districts to submit their programs that they're using. And the state evaluated those submittals against a rubric. They were independently reviewed by teams of reviewers by the state. And the seven, originally it was six, and then they added another one in November, were deemed to have met all of the criteria that the state was looking for. Now, the state has been very clear, you know, they're not 100% perfect, but the preponderance of the program meets everything that they're looking for. So these seven are on the list. And that was what was sent out to all of the schools on September 29th of this school year.
All right, because I am very concerned about what you've been talking about, the PD for the teachers. We, you know.
I hear you.
It's very frustrating.
I know, I understand.
Because getting information in April is too late to think you're going to implement it in September.
And I don't know that it will be, I mean, honestly, I have no idea how long they'll take. It could be, maybe they'll pleasantly surprise me, and the waiver results will come back the beginning of March, and I'll know where I stand, who knows?
But realistically, if the deadline is sometime in February, for them to review all of the waivers that are coming in, there's no way you're going to hear from them before April.
So this.
Very unfair of the state to say that then you have to implement for September.
Right.
It should be the following September. We have to give our teachers adequate preparation for any program we're expecting them to implement. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Latour?
Yes.
It's been a few days since I've read the waiver. But it was my understanding that there were two options on the waiver. You could submit that you have a curriculum that meets the requirements of the state. And I thought there was also below that, an option that you ask for a one-year extension because it's not in your budget, because you need to get the resources, because you need to do the professional development. So is there an option if they, my first option is stay with the curriculum we have. But if they reject that, then will we go to Plan B of saying, give us another year? Because how are we going to train the teachers in the summer?
So it is, yes, no, there are two parts to the waiver. So there's the waiver where you submit what you're doing. And then there is an extension that you can apply for a one-year extension for lack of resources. I don't think PD is a part of it. I think it's financial.
Not in our budget, that's financial. Yeah.
Right.
They didn't.
So, again, there's no guarantees with either of those, but they're both due on the exact same date. So the extension.
So we have to pick one.
Yeah. So the state, to Mrs. Costelli's point, asked last Friday for each district to submit a three-question survey that basically asked what our intentions were. So they could gauge, do you know automatically you're going with one of these programs? Do you know you're going to submit for a waiver? Or do you know that you're going to, I think the extension one was the third question, I'm not sure.
Need an extra year?
So we put in that we're applying for the waiver, because then the state will then know three schools are asking for a waiver or 140 schools are asking for a waiver, which will then give them some ability to give some direction back to the districts of, look, folks, it's going to be a while, or you should hear your results on such and such a date, so. Mort?
I don't, honestly, I'd have to, I have to, I don't have it in front of me, but I'm not sure we're going to qualify under the financial piece to it. But I'll reread it again for the eighth time. It's like imprinted now. So I didn't mean to bring up such a long topic either, I apologize.
No, this is excellent. Thank you very much. It's something that has to stay on everybody's radar. These unfunded mandates are incredibly difficult. At the Cabe Conference, there were the tiny districts like Coventry, Pomfret. They were struggling with the same thing. They didn't have the bandwidth of, we are very, very fortunate that you were able to get the committee that you got together to spend the evenings reviewing that with the publishers, because there's other districts that just did not have the bandwidth to do that. And every district has been left on their own to look at all seven programs. There was no coordination from the state saying, look at it by DURG, or look at it by, you know, five districts here and five districts here. And it was just appalling. I mean, it's just, everybody's on their own, fending for themselves. But thank you very much. Mrs. Passeretti, then we'll go on to Mrs. Turner's administrative update.
I promise, because I want it to be quick as well. So you actually asked one of my questions, so that's good. The other question that I have is, is this something where we're going to have, let's say we get the waiver, and let's say next year, our test scores are still not where they should be? Will we have to, can, how, is this something where we need to apply for a waiver every year? Or is this waiver good for the rest of our lives?
No, I don't think I have an answer for that yet. Some people have, you know, we have monthly meetings with the RESCs and that kind of thing. And the state has been really good about coming to those meetings. And those questions have been asked, Mrs. Passeretti. They just, we don't have an exact answer yet from the state. So we don't know, you know, what their review process is for if you applied for a waiver and were granted, or if you picked one of these programs and your test scores still weren't going up. You know, there isn't really an answer for either of those things yet. Or if programs will be added to the list, and if so, when? Because, you know, a good curricular review cycle isn't just one year. You're not necessarily going to see results in just one year. Progress takes time, whether it's your own curriculum.
If we get waiver, and then they come next year, we're probably going to have to keep applying for it.
I don't know.
I'm guessing.
It could be, I'm really not sure.
Okay, thank you.
That would be a lot of work every year to do that, I'm going to be honest. But test scores is a part of the waiver. So we do have to provide, not our ESPA scores, because this is K3. We have to provide our universal screen information for the past couple of years using STAR and early literacy. But come fall, the state has changed their whole list of universal screens for K3, so we'll be utilizing a new one on top of the changes to the reading program, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Good evening. I don't have much of an update this evening. We did have our first committee meeting for our school refusal, school avoidance workforce, task force, I guess you would call it. And we're really delving into what we can put in support for our students and our families. And this is a committee that is represented by staff members who have volunteered their time after school once again, through the pre-K, through 12 level plus administrators. It's a team that's really dedicated to supporting our students. We had our first meeting where we defined the problem. And it took us a while to really narrow down what our students and families are running into. And now we're going to go find the solution. So we're looking forward to that. In terms of professional development, our middle school and high school teams continue to work with implementing our new programs and learning Read 180 and. in Learning Read 180 and Math 180. We are seeing some improvements for our students and we're really looking forward to that continuing. And our elementary staff was able to participate with their buildings, which was really great. We had some mental health PD, some reading PD, and just overall, just some good bonding with their, their teams. So, I wish everyone a wonderful holiday. And that is it for me.
Mrs. Belluzi, and then I have one request also.
Okay. One thing I wanted to mention that before we moved on was, I just wanted to give an update on the Center for Innovation and Design at Fritz Elementary School. So, starting after the break, we have one of our fifth-grade teachers, Mr. Christopher Stone, who's going to be on special assignment from January through the end of the school year. And he's going to be working at the center for us in terms of looking at what we have there. Lots of materials had been ordered during COVID and things had been kind of put on hold for a while there. So, his task is to kind of work collaboratively with us at Central Office, look at what's there, kind of go through the inventorying of stuff that we have, look at the current, the curriculum that was being used. Is that something we need to revise? Kind of giving us an idea of what's there now. And then we'll be discussing steps moving forward. So, we'll keep you informed as we move through, but I wanted to provide everyone with an update as to the center. Thanks.
You couldn't, you couldn't have picked a better candidate.
Thank you. I think he's really excited for this opportunity and looking forward to working with us at Central Office. And in the field of science, obviously, we know that's one of his really wonderful focuses. And so, I do think it's going to be a nice collaborative move going forward. And we'll still keep in touch with Dr. Menzo, I've talked with him numerous times about this. And so, we're kind of all just going to start planning as to where are we now and what could be some next steps for us moving forward.
Excellent, thank you. One thing that I wanted to just bring up, and it came to mind as you talked about the numbers that were shared with the mayor for, as far as the free and reduced lunches. There was legislation that was passed shortly before COVID that eliminated the ability for any school district to withhold a meal from a child if they didn't have the funds in their account. So, and there's no more peanut butter sandwiches or anything. A child goes through the, the lunch line, they get a meal, period. That, I know our principals have the principal funds, but these unpaid lunch balances, I just read an article in the Hartford Current this afternoon, I believe it was on East Hampton. These unpaid lunch balances and lunch and breakfast are going to be creeping up very fast at all the schools. That is not, because it's legislation that happened within, I want to say like a year before COVID. We've never tracked that centrally. And it's just been school by school, the principals have kind of taken care of that. Is some, is that something that the Strategic Planning Committee or Mr. Bondi or Central Office can see? Is that something that the board should be made aware of, that we should track how many unpaid balances there are? Like, what's the total of the district? Are we going to be $50,000 in the red at the end of this school year, or $100,000?
So, it's something we can definitely look at and we can talk about on Wednesday with our Central Office team. I don't think it would be that hard for us to continue to track it. You are correct that we do have principals accounted every single one of our schools so that our students do receive the lunches to whatever it is. And, and we take care of that and we deal with that separately. So, we do make sure, and that's been going on for years, ever since I've been here since 2014. So, that's a continued practice that we will continue and have continued since December 1st, since the prices have changed. But that is something we can talk about as to how we would track that. I know the schools have it, so it would just be us kind of keeping track of it globally as a district. But that's something we can definitely talk about and share.
And then I, I believe we can like send out the balances to the parents. And after like two attempts, we send out information, like the free and reduced lunch application, Masters Manor information. But there's no ability to collect, if they don't pay, they don't pay.
Correct. Each school does a fabulous job of, of tracking that down and communicating with families regarding that. And so, for the most part, we do, you know, each school's different, but they do receive the money back. I mean, I'm going back to when I was at Ponteau, you know, that was something, we did have a system in place. And we did set up, you know, individual talks with families regarding where they are. We did provide them with the applications and go over some of that if needed and as needed when we had those discussions.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Moving on to item 16 announcements, we have quite a few announcements here. For January, our instructional committee will be on January 3rd, Tuesday, January 3rd via Google Meet. Our operations committee meeting will be Monday, January 9th, also at 6:00 PM via Google Meet. On January 11th, we will have two meetings. We will first have an in-person meeting, I'm sorry, virtual, I'm sorry, we have these, I have them backwards. We will first have a virtual meeting at 5:00 PM. And that is going to be virtually anywhere, we can, we're not going to be together as a board for that. That's going to be from 5:00 to 6:00. At 6:30, the board will join an in-person meeting at Mark Titian High School. And that is the public community forum regarding our facilities. There's already a survey out for community members to give feedback on the facilities. That will be our public forum to get feedback from the board. The first is an hour, the second, I, we probably, I can't put a cutoff on it right now. We'll probably do a sign-up sheet. And then based on how many people sign up, we'll have a timer. It'll either be two to three minutes per person, we'll see how many people we really get. Mrs. Belluzi?
Yeah, that's perfect, we can do that. And then just to interject for a second, the virtual portion of the meeting for board members, Mrs. Veyou is setting up laptops for each of you
Oh, awesome.
And giving you a room assignment, so if you wanted to, and we will all be there as well if you need any assistance logging on. But if you wanted to take the 5:00 to 6:00 virtual meeting from Sheen, we have that set up for all of you to be able to do that so that then you'll have that little bit of a break and then come to the auditorium in between so that you don't have to worry about leaving your house and getting there.
That is much appreciated
You're welcome.
For people that live way out in the sticks. I couldn't live further from Sheen if I tried.
We figured it would just be easier and we'll all be there. So, if there's any issue logging on, we'll make sure it's all set. But I just thought that might be a little bit easier for everybody moving forward. I'm sorry to interrupt, Mrs. Vado.
Nope, that's perfect, thank you. Then in January, we also begin our marathon of budget meetings. We will have a budget meeting on January 18th, Wednesday, Wednesday, January 25th, and Monday, January 30th. All of those will be 6:00 PM on Google, via Google Meet. Our regular scheduled meeting will be January 23rd here at the Robert F. Preese Town Council Chambers at 6:30 PM. And if there is no other business to come before the board this evening, I'd like to wish all of the families and students a very happy, healthy holiday and to really unplug, be with each other, and enjoy your time off. Thank you very much, good evening.
If I could just have a minute?
Sir?
I'd just like to take note of the fact that we lost a treasured member of our community in the past week, Mr. Colin Lavellette, who was an excellent teacher and a role model for everybody he ever came in contact with. If we could have a minute of silence for that, please. Thank you.
Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.